None?
None.
Okay. Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll? Oh, we need a motion to, uh, accept, okay.
Second.
Move.
Second.
No further discussion, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Okay, we got a, a, a set of personnel items. We can approve, I can take a motion for one through five plus the addendum. The addendum is, uh, naming a couple of administrative staff. Michael Jenkins as the principal at Rox Elementary School and Alicia Lawson McKinney as, uh, the principal of the real school at the high school. So I can accept the motion for one through five plus the addendum.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Horton?
Uh, yes, at this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our four new principals to the district. I give them an opportunity to stand and meet the Board of Education and also be captured on, uh, our television to, you know, to the public and the community later on. So first of all, I would like to introduce, uh, Michael Jennings. Mr. Jennings would be the new principal-
Principal at Roxborough Elementary School.
Mr. Jennings.
Jenkins.
Jenkins, I'm sorry. Oh, I can't read, yes. Jenkins. I'm sorry, Mr. Jenkins.
Well, I just wanted to, uh, say good evening to everyone and thank you for having me here to have an opportunity to just reintroduce myself, so to speak. Um, I, uh, had the wonderful opportunity to teach at Coventry for about four years. And, uh, well, I think it's like full circle because I went out and, you know, worked, I hit the pavement and worked real hard as administrator and now I'm back and, uh, it's full circles. Now I feel like I'm back for good, uh, now serving the district as a, as a principal. So I'm really excited about that and, um, thank you and I look forward to all the hard work and fun that we're gonna have. Thank you.
I'd like to, as we introduce people, Mike, thank you. We want, we need to get you people to the microphone so we're able to record you.
Oh, did you want me to do that again?
If you would.
I'll probably do a better job.
We'll do this twice with everybody. That's how we're gonna run things now.
One more hot seat.
Okay. There we go. Okay. Go ahead, start it.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Um, I wanted to take a moment to, to thank you for having me this evening. Um, I had the opportunity, I'm, I'm really glad to be back in Cleveland Heights. Uh, this is actually a, a district that is close to my heart. I started, did a lot of teaching here, four years at Coventry. Um, loved my time here and, uh, wanted to move into administration. So, um, when I hadn't, saw the opportunity in Cleveland Heights to become an administrator, I jumped right on it and I made sure that anybody that was willing to listen would know that I'm really glad to be here and I'm gonna work as hard as I can, uh, to be, uh, you know, the best principal I can be. And Roxborough is a wonderful place. I had a great time getting to know some people the, uh, last week. So I'm just, uh, very happy to be here and thank you for having me and, uh, look forward to working with everybody, so.
Thank you.
Our, uh, our next principal that I'd like to introduce is principal of Boulevard Elementary and that is Shelley Pulling. Shelley, if you'd come to the microphone, please.
I'm so happy I didn't have to go first. Um, I'm Shelley Pulling. I come from, um, 14 years of administrative experience. I've spent, uh, I spent four years as an assistant principal, six as a principal K-4, and then the last four as a principal in grades three, five. Um, I'm very excited for the opportunity to work for the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District at Boulevard. I spent some time over at Boulevard this afternoon, was able to see the staff. Um, I saw, uh, one of their staff meetings. I saw the kids, um, leaving the building. They were very excited. I think they thought I was starting tomorrow. Um, I, I really, it, it's been nice meeting some people and already starting to make some connections, so I'm eager to, to start my work. Um, of course, I have to finish my current job first, but, um, this is a great opportunity for me and I, I'm really pleased. Um, it was a great process to go through. It was nice to meet the people that I've already met and I'm looking forward to meeting more people soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next principal is the new principal at the real school at Cleveland Heights High School and that is Alicia Lawson McKinney.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lisa Lawson McKinney and, um, thank you for having me here. I am excited about leading the real school at, at the high school. Uh, it's going to be something new for me. I'm excited about it. I do have experience, but I welcome the challenge and look forward to, to being here. Thank you for the vote of confidence.
Thank you.
And our fourth principal is a familiar face to the district. She's been serving as the interim principal at the high school, but now officially the permanent principal at Mosaic School at Cleveland Heights High School, Jane Samari.
Good evening. I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to be official principal of Mosaic. I look forward to, um, harnessing all the energies that I've spent so far in the district, my 22 years here as teacher at the high school, teacher leader, um, coordinator of Gifted in the Arts and now the principal of Mosaic. Um, I'm anxious to continue to strive for academic excellence for all of our students and also to continue to foster partnerships in the community to enhance all the great work that our very talented, uh, arts and music staff already have with the students. So, once again, thrilled to have this opportunity to have this new position and I'm looking forward to our administrative team at the high school working together to achieve success for all our students. Thank you.
Well, welcome aboard. We'll be looking forward to, uh, the coming years. Um, and I, I'm sure that you'll get the support that you would need and expect in order to do the best job that you can. So, thank you. Okay, we'll move. We have, uh, other, um, personnel items and we need to take each one of them one at a time. And the first one is, uh, C6 is approval of layoff due to, uh, reduction in force. And I need a motion. This is actually the classified staff. We have nine classified positions that, uh, are being reduced. So I'll accept a motion to, um, approve, uh, those layoffs.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions?
Is there an opportunity for them to possibly, possibly be called back or is this pretty much based on, um, need and, and?
Well, they will stay on the recall list. So, uh, as other needs or positions come available, they would be the first individuals in seniority, they would be offered those opportunities. So, yes.
Do we have, uh, less, uh, students in special education or, because since the reduction of so many in the special ed peer professionals, I was just wondering-
Yeah, that was driven by work that the ed services did, primarily, uh, Jeff Johnston in terms of reprioritizing and, and reorganizing some of the services that we're providing. Um, I would have to defer to him for more details if you wanted a more detailed explanation.
Because I know that we get a lot of concerns about special ed and things of that nature. So just to see so many, um, peer professionals and, because usually the special ed numbers grow as opposed to decline.
Right. It's not a, uh, the reductions in those positions, uh, is not due to reduction in need or students. It's in, really a change in service. We have, um, those aides been working primarily with inclusion classrooms and, uh, our focus was changing our practice to ensure that our students who are in those inclusion classrooms can receive that support both from the classroom teacher, but also from the intervention specialist. So it's not a question of less students or less need. It's just a question, a change in how we're delivering service. Yeah.
So the IS would be more interactive in the classroom as opposed to outside of the classroom?
Right. It's really two things. One is, you know, special education begins in the regular ed classroom and the services that are provided, uh, you have to justify taking those services from the regular ed setting into a more restrictive specialized setting.
Right.
So part of our work is to ensure that our classroom teachers, regular ed classroom teachers, uh, receive the supports and the skills to ensure that they have students with disabilities and are offering them supports. Part of our, our charge is to make sure that that support is always not seen as a person or a position. Um, it's practice, it's, uh, accommodations, it's interventions, those kinds of things. So it's not a question of, um, of, you know, less need. It's a question of how we're supporting our regular ed teachers to provide those services. And, um, you know, we're very confident that this is gonna enable us to do that.
And, and I don't wanna, because I, we have a whole agenda.
You, you can ask questions.
But I'm just, I'm, sorry, you said, so basically you're saying that the classroom teacher is gonna be more responsible for, the regular ed teacher is more responsible for the special ed student or?
Could be. I mean, it's, any, any special education student who's being served in a classroom, um, you know, it's not a question of being, one teacher being more responsible than the other when it comes to the services for that student. What we're trying to, uh, to make sure of is that when a student's in a classroom setting, that, um, many, many, many of our students can be successful within a regular classroom setting simply through accommodations and modifications that are provided by the classroom teacher. And, uh, when we think about our supports, our supports, um, in the past traditionally have been just kind of based on the aide providing the service. And quite frankly, that's, uh, not necessary in a lot of ways. So, you know, when I, when I begin my response talking about the, the supports of the, the regular ed teacher, that's what I mean, is that we believe we have many, many students who can function within a regular ed environment, um, who do not need the res, the support of an instructional aide in that classroom, but can be successful within the classroom setting with the classroom teacher. The other part of that is that there's consultation with that student's case manager, who is the intervention specialist. And that consultation can occur in the classroom, but it also can occur with the regular ed teacher to work with them on supports, um, accommodations, modifications, those kinds of things. So we feel like that's a model that, uh, our students can benefit from. And in looking at our inclusion numbers and looking at our services, we felt like this was an area where we could make a, a change in staffing, but not impact our students detrimentally in any way.
So the intervention specialist and the teacher will be more hands-on and included as opposed to that third person?
Correct. They have to be. They have to be. And I think the, um, you know, that is something that, that we are striving for constantly, um, is to ensure that our, our students with special needs are in that least restrictive environment and this helps us move that process forward, um, quite frankly, in working with our teachers.
It, it seems in listening to this discussion that there is, uh, significant change in, in, in our delivery methodology. And, uh, you know, when we get to that, this issue, sometimes it's important to have a little bit of understanding, uh, whether we are doing this based on some particular data or some, uh, uh, evidence-based practices or something that we learned about that would suggest that we should be doing something different. Is there such information or data that tells us to move in this direction?
There is. I mean, we, we have a, um, an annual, uh, report that comes out from the state, um, that are performance indicators for students with special needs. And, you know, as we look at our overall, uh, profile, uh, we find that our services in terms of, and what I mean by services, kind of where the students are receiving their services and with whom. When we looked at our model over the past couple of years, our model was more restrictive. Uh, we don't have as many students, um, that are as included in the regular ed environments as we think, uh, there should be and as could benefit from it. When we were working with the, the state and looking at our practices, um, they also identified that same thing, you know? So there's a shared concern that, um, that perhaps our services, while there's often a benefit from that very small classroom environment and that close working relationship with the intervention specialist, there's a big component of the law that talks about access to non-disabled peers. And we believe strongly in that when it comes to the least restrictive environment. So we have looked at our, our data, we've looked at our, uh, achievement data, looked at our service data through our performance indicators, um, and we believe this is the right direction to go because ultimately, our students with special needs need to be prepared to be successful in a global economy. They need to be prepared to be independent, uh, functioning adults. Um, and, you know, we need to move that, that expectation, um, beginning in elementary, middle and high school, um, as best we can to that independent skillset. So, looking at our performance indicators, looking at our achievement, um, we felt like this is certainly a direction we can go.
So you, so we were still, we still had a lot of self-contained classes?
Well, we have, uh, we have a, a continuum of services. So we have some that you would deem to be a self-contained class where you have kids who are essentially with their intervention specialist all day.
Right. So we were still doing it?
Well, and sometimes those are students with, with multiple disabilities and very severe disabilities and, and access to the general curriculum in a regular ed setting is, is not necessarily appropriate. I think it's less, the, it's not really the self-contained, it's more the resource classrooms.
Okay.
Where we had students who were being served in resource classrooms for core academic math or English or something along those lines, that's where we see a real opportunity to move to a, a, a less restrictive environment through co-teaching, uh, through consultation, uh, consultation model at the high school. Those are areas where, uh, we, we can make some, some changes in our service delivery model, for sure. So, do we, do we have self-contained? We do. We do, for some students, but all districts essentially should because they need to have a full continuum of service. When we've looked at our performance indicators and we've looked at our achievement data, you know, my feeling is, and again, this is, you know, in, in my position, looking at our overall program, I think in we, when we look at other districts, we need to continue to move our students toward independence. And it is difficult to do that when their environment is one that is predominantly with disabled peers. So this is a, a shift that we are doing in a large scale, um, at, at all levels.
So we co-teach at, do we co-teach at the high school?
We have co-teaching at the high school, absolutely. We've had, we've had it in, in the, in the middle school, um, certainly in our performance group, uh, literacy model at the elementary school. We have shared spaces with teachers, regular ed and special ed working together. So, um, but we have a, a great deal of co-teaching that occurs at the high school. We're actually trying to move that co-teaching piece to a consultative piece when the students get into their juniors and senior years because even though the, the co-teaching model of two teaching, we're working together is, is a great model. You know, if I go into post-secondary and I get ready for community college or whatever the case may be, that's typically not taught with a, a, you know, a professor and then another professor helping me out. It's, it's taught with, um, one professor and I need to be able to function successfully within that environment. So we're moving that toward a more of a consultative model where there's more direct contact with the regular ed teacher. You know, they're the primary service provider.
But not in the classroom, but outside the classroom?
Yeah.
My concern is just for teachers inside the classroom with inclusion and by, if, if they don't have a co-teacher or some type of support.
Right.
It can be overwhelming depending on the number of students that are more needy than, you know, other students. So to, that's, you know, so to move, to go to the consultation, I understand, because when you are in college, but it doesn't allow, I'm concerned about the support for the teachers when you have that mixture of students. And I agree, I, I mean, I agree having them together.
Right.
But to have, um, to make sure the teachers are supported.
Right. Could not agree more and, and understand that we have to work very well and very hard with our teachers to ensure that they, they don't, um, have a, a, a concern about the amount of support they're gonna receive or whether they have the proper skillset to do it. You know, we believe they do and we are committed to ensuring that they have the proper supports in providing those services. Because removing the aide doesn't necessarily remove all the support. The second part, which you, um, have mentioned, is their relationship with that case manager for that student with special needs, that intervention specialist. That's a relationship that continues. And whether it's a peer-to-peer relationship or whether it's a teacher working in multiple classrooms, um, that relationship will continue.
Okay. Sorry.
Don't talk about it anytime.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, um, we can move to item G7 and that's a resolution to suspend an employee without pay. And I'll take a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Okay, that moves us to item C8, a resolution to suspend administrative contracts for the reorganization and consolidation of administrative functions, coordinators of educational service. I will, um, take a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any comment, discussion? Nancy, you're-
Well, I guess just, I, I'm not sure whether we wanna, um, whether we should have any kind of public, um, statement about all of these or if that's something that we're doing as a follow-up.
Well, I'm prepared to make a statement of why we're doing it.
Thank you.
Do you want me to make that now?
No.
Well, I can say that part-
I leave it to you. I just wanted to make sure that, that it wasn't just in, in a vacuum of information to, to the people in the audience and watching.
Okay, I, I'll say something now. Uh, we have, uh, as you recall, last month, I asked, uh, the administration to look at the opportunities we might have to downsize our budget and, 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 and to stay away from the classroom as much as possible. So all of the stuff that we're dealing with is directly related to, to that and our feeling as a board that we needed to, uh, make some reductions and we felt like it was a good time for us since, to, uh, kinda examine whether there are some places where we could become a little bit leaner and still be as effective. So everything that we're talking about in terms of, uh, the reduction in forces and suspension of contracts is directly related to us trying to get to that 3.5, $4 million savings, um, that we had been discussing earlier. Uh, so the next series of, um, resolutions are directly related to that. This is, um, these are the administrative pieces of it. The one that we just did had to do with the classified staff and we had already done some work with the certified staff, uh, based on, uh, legal requirements as far as notification and such things as that.
Yeah, I think that's great context, Ron. And I think specifically saying that, that we've, I've certainly heard and I know we've all heard from members of the community who are concerned about the, the reduction in force related to the teaching staff.
Right.
And people would follow that up with, and what's going to happen in, in administration just because that's a natural question for people to ask. And, and the requirements that we have around notifying the teaching staff earlier, um, in some ways forced us to, to handle that, um, in that way. So, um, you know, it, they're all difficult.
Right.
Um, but I'm, I'm really, um, pleased with what the administrative team has put together in terms of, of reorganization plan that will, that will make the best out of the, the situation that we have before us.
Okay. And I would just like to add one more thing to that, just to, uh, that one thing that I think should be noted to, to, to be very clear to the public that, um, that one of the reasons for trying to save that $3 million is because that's their taxpayer money. And we will, according to state law, have to come back and ask for more money, uh, in the next few years. And, uh, by us trying to tighten our belt now, it will decrease the amount we're gonna have to ask for later, which is always a, a chief concern in the community of why, why do you come back and why is it so much money? And we are doing everything we can on this end to keep that fine, to keep that, uh, amount low.
Right. And that will probably, we will probably have more conversations about this because I think, uh, from our standpoint, uh, we want to make sure that if there's additional savings that can be, uh, saved, that we, uh, deal with that as well. So this is not the end of the conversation.
Thank you.
Now, right. Any other comments? We got one motion, we got a motion on the floor with a second, um, and the rest of them would follow along with the conversation that we've just had. Any other comments? Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Uh, C9, resolution to suspend administrative contract for reorganization and consolidation of administrative functions, uh, the position of coordinator, coordinator of career technical education. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
C10, there's a little bit of change in the wording of it. There, it's a resolution to suspend administrative contracts, uh, for closing of a school. And it specifically relates to the bailiff school that we will be closing, uh, after the, uh, school year is over. So I'll accept a motion to, uh, accept that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Okay. Item C11, a resolution to suspend administrative contract for reorganization and consolidation of administrative functions, director of information technology. I'll accept a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Gainer?
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Item C12, resolution to suspend administrative contracts for reorganization and consolidation of administrative functions, uh, that's building managers. I'll accept a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Comments? Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Okay. Item C13, resolution to suspend administrative contracts for reorganization and consolidation of administrative functions for the aquatic supervisor. Any, uh, I'll accept a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
And finally, item C14, resolution to suspend administrative contract for reorganization and co, consolidation of administrative functions, the pathways partnership specialist. I'll accept a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Any comments, discussions?
We need a second.
Oh, we need a second? I thought that's what that hand was. No? Okay.
I just have one question. Was that position, that position wasn't administrative? I just have one question. Was that position, that position wasn't administrative? It was administrative?
It is administrative. It was a part-time, but it was an administrative.
It wasn't a coordinated, it was just, right?
Specialist.
Specialist, specialist, okay.
Specialist, uh, basically administrative.
Right, okay.
Okay, any other comment, questions? Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peppler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Now, that's, um, pretty much all the items for action tonight. And we're gonna get directly into our work session, which is our charge for tonight. Um, and I think, uh, Mr. Horia, the first thing that we need to do is, uh, have the official second reading of the new teacher evaluation policy.
That's correct. Dr. Mishler and Mr. Talbot are here tonight to discuss that.
Okay. Uh, can we take a quick break, just in case some of the people that came to see our new principals want to leave and not feel embarrassed about it? If there are some people who would like to take this break and leave, you can. I know you're- We should probably let you, allow you to go on. Where's your dad? He's gonna put you guys through it. But if there are people who feel like they need to leave now, they can. It would take a minute for people to-
You can stay too.
Yeah, you can stay.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening. This is the second reading of the teacher evaluation policy review and the principal and other administrators' evaluation policy review. Uh, there were no additional questions from last time. I know it's kinda laborious going through page by page at the last meeting. I don't know if, any additional questions? Cause then we'll have one more reading, and then at the, once it's adopted, then we forward it to the Ohio Department of Education. The deadline for that is July first, and we are well on top of that.
So when is the next reading gonna take place?
Uh, the June regular meeting.
First June?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So if anybody has any questions or issues, maybe, be sure to look at it in the, between now and the first meeting in June, and we can deal with those at that meeting. Okay. The second item for the work session is, um, the elementary and middle school starting end times are, what, buses and bells?
Buses and bells.
It's better than saying end times, I think. Mrs. Chagall?
Thank you. So at the last meeting, our last meeting, I referenced the four options, uh, that we have been studying and that had shared with the board. And those four alternative bell schedules, uh, in that time since we last met, we've really very carefully taken a look at those, carefully studied those. Uh, we've involved the educational services department, our transportation staff, and our transportation consultant, Steve Abel, who's to my left, so I'd like to introduce him. And thank you for being here this evening. Remember that our goal was to reduce operating costs while improving service and, uh, maintaining a safe and efficient operation. And, um, some of the key factors that we considered include things like seating capacity, uh, ride time, impact on families, uh, the school schedules, uh, the impact on educational program, bargaining unit, contract issues, and cost savings. All of the options, uh, that were under consideration do meet the cost parameters that we established. So they all meet that, that threshold. Um, and while each of the plans has some pros and cons and some merits to them, uh, option four in our studies really emerged as the option that was the best choice for further development. And basically, we did that, um, and that is our recommended, administration's recommended option is option four. Um, frankly, we set options one and three aside once we came to the conclusion that that was really the best option, and we really drilled into option four. Um, some of the highlights of option four, it, the most, probably the most significant thing is, it preserves the current instructional times at all schools and requires no change to the current bell schedule. And as I said, that was a significant factor in, um, our determination to, to recommend this. Um, the level of service to families will be comparable to current. Um, the maximum ride time for public school students has been set in the, for planning purposes at forty-five minutes. And the maximum ride time for non-public school students has been set at sixty minutes. And that, the difference is primarily because the non-public students are so geographically scattered, unlike our public school students where we've got them in, in attendance areas. Um, a couple of other, uh, facts, our average, our current average, um, number of students on a bus is roughly about sixteen. With the new plan, we'll move to twenty-three. It's not a major change, but you'll see from a cost standpoint, it will be significant. Um, speaking of ride times-
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Currently it's sixteen on typically a forty-eight passenger bus.
That's correct. And we have some as few as two, or three, or four. So, um, the ride times currently average about thirty-five minutes. That's all, that's public and non-public. Under this plan that we're recommending, the average should be right around forty-five minutes. Um, as I said, the majority of students will experience ride times less than the maximums, less than that forty-five minute maximum, less than the sixty-minute maximum. Okay? Um, and our goal, you know, ultimately, we'll have to, uh, establish actual routes. And when we do that, our goal will be to have the routes, you know, be as short as possible. Um, in addition, capacity utilization on each bus will increase. What does that mean? Basically means we're gonna have more students on buses. I gave you the numbers for that just a moment ago. Um, you know, and the other thing that I, I wanna say is that no bus will be routed so that it's overcrowded. Okay? Um, the, uh, the option, this option will also eliminate the late bus problem, which was really one of the major driving factors, because the late buses were having a significant negative impact on educational programs at the buildings. So this, this option will eliminate the late bus problem that we've been experiencing.
Can you say more about that? The late bus problem? A bus that is late, or a late bus route?
It, the bus is late getting to where it needs to be.
Okay.
Right. Late getting to school.
Okay.
So kids are not getting in on a timely fashion, or they're being rushed into the building. That's not the way we wanna start kids for the start of school. All right? We wanna get them there in ample time, give them a chance to get off the bus. If they're having, uh, a breakfast, give them time to do that, get to their class, and, and start the day ready to learn.
Yeah. Steve, I think, um, pushing on this just a little bit, um, we, this is, we have this, what we call the late bus problem. Is with, is late within what we have planned? I mean, how do, how does this happen that we have late buses? I mean, it's within what we-
Doing the two rudes in the morning?
It's a combination, it's a combination of factors. One is simply structural. It's the way we are structured right now. And you remember, I talked a little bit about that, uh, at the last meeting. Right. So, so the way we tier the buses.
Right.
Um, and also, uh, you know, as you may remember, I sent you out this very, very detailed, uh, document. So we, we looked at every single student, every single route, and using the work of Steve Abel, began to look at how we could maximize these routes to eliminate the problem that we had without actually having to change the bell schedules. That was the key.
But as part of it, I mean, just to, to cut to the chase on Ron's question, because it is something that I've heard from a lot of people in the community about, about this whole topic. And it is that, am I right, that, that a bus will, after making the middle school run, will then make the ele- an elementary school run?
Correct.
In the morning?
Correct.
So that's the, that's, um, and when we're running at such a low capacity, we have so many buses out making these runs, then that's how it gets stacked up.
Partially, that's right.
And that was, and, and, and that's, again, that's what started this issue, um, at some of our elementary schools in the afternoon. The buses were fifteen minutes late. And, and so students were, and were having to remain at school waiting for those buses. And, and so when you have students who are waiting, um, in unstructured time, and then asking them to get on the bus where they have to, where they're asked to sit down and be quiet for twenty to thirty minutes, it was leading to problems, discipline problems. Um, and so the principals asked us to look into that. And, and so when we went and started having conversations with our administrative services department, we realized that because of the way our buses were, were lined up, um, some of our buses were actually finishing their middle school route at the same time they were supposed to be back at the elementaries. And, and so we were given the charge. And we, we, we made some fixes for this year because we felt that we couldn't change the, the start and end times in the middle of the year. So we, we made some, some, um, we, we shifted some of our resources to provide coverage for our students, um, and, and then started to look at our start and end times so that we could separate them a little bit, to give our, our transportation department enough time to finish a job, as they call it, and get back to their next pickup. And, and so this is the result, the work that they have now is the result of them taking a look at that and how they could do that differently and more efficiently.
And again, you know, again, this is a pretty complicated chart, but the, but what's important about this chart is two things. One, the different colors are the different blocks of different kinds of routes. Um, and the point is, they don't overlap. That's what's important, which means we're, we're leaving ample time for those buses to get where they need to go. Okay? The other thing that's important about these charts is, these become the template for which we will build actual routes, once you've given your authorization to move ahead with this plan. Okay?
If we, uh, if we go back and think about these discipline problems as, you know, one of the issues that we were trying to deal with, were we having more problems on the buses or on the campuses?
Not sure what your question is.
Well, if we have the kids that are sitting on the campus for fifteen, twenty minutes longer, are we having to do, are we having to do more discipline with those kids, or we manage to contain them or do whatever while they're on campus, but when they get on the bus, that becomes a big headache for the bus driver? I mean, where is the, where was the problem, I guess?
Ron, it's a combination of both. I mean, if, if the kids aren't getting there in a timely fashion, that's a problem. If they're sitting somewhere and waiting on a bus and don't have anything to do, or waiting at the school, that's a problem too. The, where the buses were late getting to the elementary, and then the teachers didn't have anything to do with the kids. So what do they do with them during that time? Their, their day is over, the, they've gotta go, um, we've gotta manage these kids. So it was a problem at, at all ends, frankly. I don't, I couldn't say, I mean, I, I guess we'd have to get it, a principal to-
The majority, the majority of the issues were supervisory issues at the school.
At the school, yeah.
It was at, it was, it was at the school. Um, but, you know, it, it did lead, um, to some issues on, on the buses. And the principals attributed those issues to kids being wound up and, and then having to be settled down. Instead of following the normal process for the buses that are on time, the teachers walk the kids out, they walk the kids to the buses, it's orderly.
Right.
It's an extension of the classroom.
I, I-
And, and so, and so there were some issues, and the, but the principals quickly addressed them and asked us for support when they realized them. So I would say that the majority of the issues we had were actually the supervision of kids at the school waiting for late buses.
Thanks, Jeff. So just a few more comments about the actual cost savings. Um, our estimate right now is that, uh, with full implementation of this plan, we will save about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars annually. And it could be higher. Okay? We won't know that until we actually get into actually building the routes. Um, our goal was three hundred thousand. Um, and those savings stem from a reduction of two public school bus routes in the morning, eight, uh, public school route buses in the afternoon, the transition of three public school, uh, special ed, special education routes to private contractor service, and combining some non-public school routes. So the savings are, uh, obtained through a combination of equipment operate, less equipment operating costs, fuel, uh, maintenance, supplies, et cetera, and of course, labor savings, less, uh, route time for drivers. So it's a, it's a combination of both of those factors that, that saves. And of course, as Ron, uh, mentioned at the start of the evening, um, any support operational savings create the possibility of re-channeling those dollars to educational programming. And so, for instance, um, you know, uh, the three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, I mean, we have the potential there, uh, of as many six, as many as six classroom teachers, for instance. So-
Can you go back to the privatization component? Is, have we used that before? Is that something new based on this new plan, or?
No, that's something that we do. Um, I mentioned that at the last meeting, another major component of what we do is, uh, we use private van service for the vast majority of our special ed students. Um, this year, we, uh, uh, did a competitive bid for that service and, um, to try and reduce the unit cost for that service. And we're gonna be bringing a contract recommendation to you, um, perhaps as early as the next board meeting. So, um, but that's something we do, have done for years. Every district does it, frankly.
Can you go back to the average times? Cause I, currently, the average time, the average child who's bus spends thirty-five minutes?
Yeah, and it varies widely.
I get, no, I get that. And I get, you know, the, I get why it could be that high even now with multiple stops and multiple buildings and-
Right.
And that's the combined private and public.
Yes, it is. Right.
Right.
It's combined both.
Skews it higher.
Right. And, and the, and the new will be forty, average, you're estimating, I understand the routes have not all been mapped out.
Right.
But forty-five minutes, combination, public and private.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Right. Steve was just mentioning that that's, that's an ongoing annual savings. Not just, not just a one-time savings. Those, that three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars is forever going forward.
Well, and I, I think what I appreciate about tonight's conversation is, is while all of this sort of, you've identified transportation issues in the past, and you've been before us i- in the past to talk about this. And clearly, this is all connected to our desire to, to save some dollars, but there are educational reasons clearly that we need to handle this issue. And that wasn't raised, um, at the last meeting. And I think that's what caused some concern out in the community, understandably, that we were just talking about trying to save some money and talking about maybe changing the bell schedule to save what, in the grand scheme of things, I mean, clearly, if, if it's six teaching positions, in theory, um, it's a lot of money, but it's, it, it might not have been worth the disruption to the families and the kids at changing the, the bell schedule.
Uh, you see, I know you said annually, uh, this would be the savings. How much of this is based on current student distribution? Now, obviously, there's that smoothing function that goes on because you got elementary kids who'll stay in elementary for certain length of time and all. But as the student distribution changes to, how, how did, how did you work then to the equation of, of what, what the needs will be going forward, or didn't you?
You want me? Oh, okay. I'll let you answer that one, maybe.
What I did originally this year is to take all of the, the components of the routes, the, the times, the mileages, and the student counts, and distribute that over that large Excel spreadsheet that you were, uh, that you were given. Uh, and that's a departure point. That's where you say, we know what is going on now. Um, kindergartners are going to move to first grade, new kindergartners are coming in. Checking with administration, we see that you have some blips in, in certain parts of the population, but largely, you're trending down. Um, so for right now, this is kind of at, we've come from thirty thousand feet to five thousand feet. The next step will be to put students into those. Um, I don't expect big changes. Um, you know, I don't think that the numbers of students out there are going to shift. And I would add to that, that, um, you might recall that we did a census, um, earlier, um, that just finished up. Earlier, uh, up till now, the district has only done passenger counts on buses. So you know how many. The census will tell you how many and who they are that will ride, and more importantly, not ride. So we're- So we're now taking the universe of riders by asking people, are you using the bus? If they clearly say no, then they can be taken out of an eligible ridership position. Doesn't mean they're not entitled to transportation. It means they have declined. They can reactivate their ability to ride with a phone call. But for planning purposes, we're taking that number down. All of the information that's here has worked on last year's routes or this year's routes, I should say. And those are kind of high watermarks. So we've planned for a lot more than we think is going to come. So if we do have some anomalies, I think that they can be accommodated easily. So it within, within reason, of course, but I think that, you know, it's as new kindergarteners come in, uh, students move in, students move out, um, I think that there is going to be ample seating. And that seating has never been a problem at Cleveland Heights University Heights. It's more time because of weak demographics here, uh, traffic and congestion, uh, and simply the, the number of assignments that the buses are asked to take on.
And it, just to be clear, Steve, when you mentioned before, some, some buses only have two or three students, that's not how many they are, that are on the route if all students who could get on the bus would get on, right? That's just how many actually ride the bus.
Well, and that picture doesn't get much better. So in some cases, buses were only routed to four or five kids and only two are riding.
And is that, I mean, I think we have to be careful here of, of, has this been going on for years? I mean, because if so, you would think that we would have addressed that sooner. So, or is this a new, a newer phenomenon?
Yeah. Go ahead.
What, what I believe I, I see happening or happened was, um, how best to explain it? Some of that was intentional because if you have a very short amount of time between a high school run and a middle school or middle and an elementary, um, the bus has to move quickly, the students still have to be moved, but you can't take on a long circuitous route with a lot of kids on board unless the demographics are favorable. I mean, some routes out there move in eight minutes and they move 46 children. Other routes out there that are going to Hill and Dale with house stops as opposed to corner stops are out for 42 minutes and there's 16 kids assigned to the bus, 12 of which show up on a daily basis. So there's a lot of, because the demographics are weak, there's, there's not a lot of population at every stop. And you don't have a lot of time because of some very close bell schedules. To this point, your, your bell schedules right now are nonlinear. So that means in the morning, buses generally have ample time, but in the afternoon, buses are actually, as, as Steve has already said, out en route at 3:20, making a last stop when the elementary's out at 3:15. This plan going forward does not sister middle and elementary school routes in the afternoon. In seven cases, they are paired in the morning when there's ample time to do it. But in the afternoon, they are stacked one on top of one another. So the middle schools no longer have an elementary school assignment when they're done. And the elementaries either have a non-public before it, uh, that has ample time, deadhead time to finish the route and then move over to the elementary. Deadhead times are between 10 and 15 minutes. That's not bad in, in a, in a school district that's nine square miles. I realize traffic can be a, a challenge at times. I've been in it. But I think that up till now, there was actually cases where one route just melded into another, get there when you can. And, and that, to Jeff's point, caused problems with buses arriving late, students being itchy, getting on the bus, not settling down right away, getting off again late. As standalone routes, I see these problems in the past.
And so then one other question and then I'll relinquish the floor here. You talk about the, the maximum that you have on plan for is one hour. Now, again, we talked about the fact that those are summer or better weather times. So it could potentially be longer, but not, I, I do understand that that's not necessarily, that would not be the norm. But you mentioned that, I think you probably, Steve, are probably the one who wrote it, that that's an industry standard, just in terms of if we want to look at the educational component of it. So if that's in the morning, an elementary student, uh, being on a bus that long before they come to school, is there any sort of data that, that suggests, you know, if that, is, is the industry standard based on the fact that, you know, about that's, that's about the maximum you want to keep them on a bus if they're going to be ready to come to school, ready to learn?
The, the industry standard is from coast to coast is one hour. That seems to be the, the acceptance point. Over that, you say, wait a second, that, that can be a long time for a younger person. I've worked in environments out west where routes were just that long because you were out in, in cattle ranges and very few stops. Again, very poor demographics. Rides become shorter when you live in a, in a metropolitan area and kids come to the corner and you can pick up 12 kids at each stop, five stops, you're full. That's not what's happening here because a lot of your population is in non-public and they're not riding the public buses. So they're, they're separated. So whatever you have here, you're cutting in half. And then you have boundary areas for the public and, and no boundary areas for the non-public. So they end up being longer routes as a result. What I would ask you to keep in mind is when I say 45 minutes and an hour, that's up two. So when, when I did the schematic and said, you know, there's, there's two hours of driving time here, you can do the two hours in two hours with one bus, you can do it in one hour with two buses, or you can do it with four buses in 30 minutes. We're looking at taking those times now that we know them, they've been teased out of the routes, um, and applying 45 minutes to the known amount of time that it's taking now. That's with, again, students that will come away when the cer, when the census is added to the trapeze database. So some of those students will come out, if you don't have to go up to the street, it will be less time. It also accommodates all the house stops that are currently out there. There's, nobody is going to be forced, you know, if they're at a corner stop now, that will be preserved. If they're at a house stop now, doesn't mean that it necessarily has to be preserved. It means that there is time to keep it. So now it's a question, the, the transportation staff will have more options than they did before. So I believe that this is right now the best of all possible worlds, uh, to do this and keep the bell times that you currently have.
And Jeff, from an educational standpoint, do you agree that this is the best option? So in other words, are there, is there anything about this option, any of this option that you see as a negative from an educational standpoint?
No, not at all. We, um, we actually pushed for it. You, you've been given, you were given four options. The, the, the first option, uh, um, push the elementary start time, um, to 9:15, which when we surveyed our teachers, you know, that it pushed it, it extended their day. And so our teachers said, you know, elementary students, um, tend to do better in the morning and you're going to ask them to stay a little later. We talked to some parents about it and parents, you know, told us that nine o'clock is a stretch for me to, to be able to drop my kids or walk my kids to school and get to work on time. And now you're going to push that back to 9:15. And, and, and so that, that was a, even though it, it helped us meet this requirement of giving the, our transportation department enough time in between the start and end times between the middle and elementary schools, but we felt that it was going to, to, to hurt our families and, um, maybe even weaken our educational program because we're going to ask kids to stay in school a little longer at the elementary level. Our version two, um, flopped middle school and elementary. And there were pluses with, with that. Element, middle school students tend to do better with a later start time. And we thought that, um, elementary school kids would, would do better in the morning because the research says they do better in the morning and they would be ending a little earlier. But when you look at our, when you, when you talk to some of our parents, we would now have, um, elementary stu, school students getting home almost an hour ahead of their middle school brothers and sisters who in some cases are, provide childcare. So we would be, and in some essence, forcing some of our parents to, to use before and after care or daycare. Also, looking at that, it would put some of our elementary school students at bus stops and very, very early in the morning. And, and so that wasn't a viable option. Option three, left the times about the same, but put elementary and middle school students on the buses together and, and then increase the amount of students on the buses. And, and then we just felt that that, if that could be avoided, we would like to do that. And, and so when, when option four was brought to us, um, we, we, we asked them again, can it meet what we originally asked for you to do, to make sure that our buses arrive on time in the morning and that they're there on time to pick up our students so we don't have supervisory issues? And, and once they assured us of that, then we were okay with it as an educational service department.
Any other questions, comments?
We, we don't need formal action. We just need you to say to us, you're good and we'll make it happen.
I just had one more, the, the issues that we had earlier with the, um, like the Boys and Girls Club and those afternoon stops, those are still figured into this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Although the offline, when you start talking about savings, we didn't really look at that in terms of trying to find savings there, right?
We did not.
Any comments on what Steve says he doesn't need any formal action? What he wants to do is to see if he got five heads nodding.
That's all I need.
Well, we think that, um, I mean, I think that you guys have, you know, done the work and it seems that it's reasonable. Uh, I would certainly want us to stay on top of it and maybe, uh, as we implement this to give us a periodic, uh, reports on how it's going. And I think I'm particularly interested in us tracking, um, the kinds of, of things we get back from parents because I think the parents, we got quite a bit of, um, communications around this plan. And I don't know if, uh, if, I know that what I had asked is that we would just at least look at some of the things that people were talking about. And we feel fairly comfortable that we have addressed those issues, I, I believe.
But I was going to say, if we don't get an update here, we will get an update.
I know that.
So we'll know how it's going.
Yeah. Keep in mind that, as, as Steve mentioned, you know, we've been at 5,000 feet, we're now going to get on the ground, we're going to start building those routes. And you annually approve the bus routes. That's a requirement that the board approves those routes. So, um, you will definitely, the, the next step for us is to, to dive right in and start building routes and then we'll bring those back to you and, uh, have some more, you know, some more discussion about it.
But they have a number of students.
They will.
Proposed to be on the bus.
They will. Yeah, they will. Yeah.
I do want to just add one little interesting tidbit. I did get a call from a private school parent who received a call from their school asking if they plan to maintain their bus usage, but from the perspective of thinking that we were trying to get rid of busing for private school kids. And I explained that we couldn't do that, but this, the, so one of the communication piece, you know, a piece of learning might be to make sure that the staff at these, if you're relying on staff of the private schools to communicate out to their parents, we might want to be really clear on the, on the why. Or, you know, or it could have been just a simple misunderstanding or, or rush, rush to concern.
Right.
I would, I would share with you that we had a lot of discussion with not only the, uh, the public school principals, but the, uh, non-public principals when we did the census. That census required that we went out, I went out with, uh, Scott Smith, the transportation supervisor, uh, to each of the buildings to distribute census lists that we asked principals to, uh, make inquiries with the, their students to find out whether they ride all day, half day, or not at all. But it, it gave us some time to talk about the service, some of their concerns, um, and what the census would mean to them in terms of, um, improving the service as we were able to shrink the universe of riders, in turn, what, what that mean to their service levels. So I think that they, they understood that and embraced it. We certainly had a very positive return, um, out of, I believe, close to 31 schools that we took census information to. Only two, uh, one declined, the other one was simply late getting it back and it yet may still come. But, um, again, out of that population, 29 schools returned information to us, uh, which I, I, I see is very encouraging.
Okay, great. Look forward to, uh, any comments that come in because I think some of them start coming in tomorrow.
Undoubtedly.
Yeah, keep us posted.
We'll be here.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Okay. Our final item for this work session is discussion of the lay facilities plan. And I think the first thing that I would say is that we do, we did receive the report at our last meeting from the Lay Facilities Committee and we do, uh, we can't say enough about the work that was done, the time that was invested by, uh, the people who were involved in it. And I'll say again that we really do appreciate that. The kind of interesting thing that we're faced with is that we have to do our due diligence around this plan and try to get the questions that we need to have answered within a fairly short period of time. Our schedule is such that we have to have two readings of this by the end of July, I believe. And so we are on schedule to, um, talk about it tonight and maybe there's some more framing that will be done tonight. And then in addition, we have pretty much thought that there may be an opportunity, we might have to have a special meeting to dig into this a little bit more. But I think we, there are some things that we have already requested and, and I think we'll hear some of that, uh, tonight. And then I think we will need to, uh, try tonight to kind of figure out where we are and where we need to go and what it's going to take for us to get there. So I would say that as a, a, a lead in. Uh, is there any thoughts you, we want on the front end or we ready to dig in?
We'll have representatives. Steve, we have representatives from Fanning, Howie and Regency here and also members of the Facilities Committee.
Okay, you want?
Okay, that's fine.
Just going to bring everybody up.
Al, Kathy?
Yeah, Steve?
I think we have to cheers.
Right.
Cheers.
Yeah.
Here.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
We're going to.
I think so.
Okay. We're going to let Patrick start this presentation.
I'm not going to go over the plan again, but I am going to give you an update on some work that's been done since the meeting two weeks ago. Uh, there was an email that was sent out today and, and if you need a printed copy of it, I have some for you that looks at ways we were hoping to bring down the, um, the cost per 100,000, um, some would call it the millage of the bond issue, which as you'll recall, originally was at 6.46 mils and would have cost the, um, the homeowners in our district $198 per $100,000 assessed value. And we were able to, um, come up with a few, um, ideas, recommendations that.
You pass.
Sure.
I have seven there. So one for Doug, one for Scott and one for Courtney.
Um, one, um, one thing to note is, again, on the recommendation of our bond council, uh, one way to, um, bring the millage down a little bit is to extend the, the term of the bond from 36 to 38 years. Um, at a millage of 5.987 and an interest rate of 4 and 1/4 percent, that raises $134.8 million. To, um, then use the COPS loan at a, a level of 1 and 1/4 million dollars of PI funds. That is an increase, uh, from what we were talking about two weeks ago of $250,000 a year. Although I would point out that we could finance the first chunk of the work, which is the high school, uh, through the bond issue, which would mean, but would not be necessary to take out that COPS loan for a couple of years, which opens up a couple of million dollars in permanent improvement money for work at the elementary schools, for example, that might need it. As you know, we've made some, we've got pilot programs ongoing, uh, in terms of learning communities at Rocks Middle and at the high school, and we've made investments in equipment and furniture and fixtures. And they took a, we, we had our, our architects and, uh, instruction managers look at that and assess what of that. that COPS loan for a couple of years, which opens up a couple of million dollars in permanent improvement money for work at the elementary schools, for example, that might need it. As you know, we've made some, we've got pilot programs ongoing in terms of learning communities at Rocks Middle and at the high school, and we've made investments in equipment and furniture and fixtures, and they took, we had our architects and construction managers look at that and assess what of that investment would be, could be carried over. It's actually about, it's more than $700,000, of which we're recommending $300,000 be attributed to the project, to Phase One, and then also a good chunk of money put aside, several hundred thousand dollars, to make sure that when we have the kids moved from the high school to Wiley for swing space, that the building can be reconfigured as necessary in addition to the expense we already have for modular units. So it's not reasonable to think that we can just take the high school, drop it into Wiley without having to spend some money to move, move things around. In consultation with Sam Bell and the Sustainability Working Group, the more research they've been doing on sustainable energy technologies, the less completely convinced they are that necessarily geothermal is the absolute best way to go. We have money in the budget for geothermal at the high school, we also had money in the budget for geothermal at the middle schools, although those sites have not yet been assessed for whether it's suitable, but say it is. It may not be the best investment to use that particular technology, so what we're saying is, let's take half the money we would have spent on geothermal at the middle schools, set it aside for sustainable energy-saving technology without specifying a particular technology, because the state-of-the-art is evolving fairly quickly there. What I think they found, and this is, these are conversations that we'll have going forward, but particularly when you put geothermal into older buildings, which is what we're looking to do, some school districts have had not getting the payback over the time period they were expecting it. So that's, if you take half of what we were gonna spend on geothermal at the middle schools, that's $850,000.
But you're keeping the full amount that you budgeted at the high school.
For now, for now, yeah. So that, what that does for us is reduces the millage to below six, but also, we are anticipating that we will, money will be raised, private donations to the tune of $2.65 million to pay for half of the football field, the track, and stadium. But we are also saying that, just in case that doesn't happen, we, there's, there's money to cover that other half. Doesn't mean we don't aggressively go out and try to raise not just that money, but other money, but there is enough money in the budget to, to do the football field and the stadium and the track.
And the two main reasons for that shift are increasing the COPS a little bit and the decrease in the, in the interest rate.
Correct.
Oh, well, obviously, then the $850,000.
Right. Also, going from 36 to 38 years.
Okay, four main reasons.
Right. But, you know, one of the things I know that is a concern is, since the Phase Two is gonna be several years down the road, we know there's gonna be money that's gonna need to be spent on repairs or maintenance at the, at the elementary schools. By, this approach allows that, like I said, we can delay the COPS loan a couple of years, but also, the high school, money that would need to be invested in the high school or the middle schools is in Phase One. So, in other words, we won't be spending money doing maintenance at the high school once the bond issue is passed, we'll be renovating the high school.
And I think Steve recently shared with us how, how the vast majority of the dollars that are spent out of the PI fund are currently spent at the high school.
We've spent $6 million since 2007, which doesn't, I mean, it makes sense when you think about the size of the building, so.
Patrick, I, I realized that I had one job to do tonight, and I failed to do it. I was not being a good host, and I did not give each of our guests an opportunity to introduce, I'd like to take a quick step back. I know they are all familiar faces to everybody, they've all been here before, but I think it would be appropriate if we just take a moment to introduce ourselves, so Steve, if you could start.
How do you do, I'm Steve Zanoni with Project Management Consultants. I'll repeat it again, I'm Steve Zanoni with Project Management Consultants. Thank you.
Scott Wagner with Regency Construction Services.
Good evening, I'm Steve Zaranen, architect with Fanning Howie.
I'm Kathy Petrie, and I'm an attorney with Squire Sanders.
Alan Baco with Stifel Nicolaus.
We also have several members of the committee, if you're on the Lay Facilities Committee or were on the Lay Facilities Committee, could you stand up for just a second? Dave Taber, Eric Silverman, Alvin Sephir, and Sam Bell. And Alan Wilkinson on the Sustainability Working Group.
Do you wanna say anything about the other savings options at this point?
I'm, well, okay, at the bottom of the page, you'll see, there are some things that would save even more money that I don't think anyone wants to do. So, for example, if we renovate the existing pool
Make a long list of that.
That's why it's at the bottom, it says, "These are not recommendations." But if you felt it was crucial to find $3 million, we could, we could renovate the existing pool, which is not a competition pool, which is not really safe for diving. Likewise, if we decided to keep career technical ed programs at Delisle, that would save $1.4 million, but it's been a pretty strong consensus that it's, it's a matter of educational opportunity and justice that those kids get the same, all the same chances as everyone else at Heights High, and that is best served by having them at Heights High.
But can I just say, we say that, but, I mean, we have different consortiums where kids travel to different schools outside of their school district and are still afforded that benefit, so.
Well, what I, what I've, for our, some of our kids, that, in terms of just being able to take advantage of scheduling opportunities, I thought, you're right, but to be able to have the, to take advantage of as many of opportunities at Heights High as possible, having them off-campus interferes with that.
When they don't have to be in this new plan.
And we're not talking about moving any programs that are currently not in our district.
Right, but I was just, I mean, I, I hear that, I just, like I said, I know that people travel an hour to go to other places to, for career tech at, in different districts, so I just, and ours is just up the street, so I just don't see how it causes that much of an issue. But I mean, if we have the space in the room, then, but like, cosmetology has never been inside the school. It used to be across the street at the Vole, and then it used, then it's, you know, it's never been inside the school.
Those are the kinds of things that five of you need to weigh and decide what, you know, where you put the most value.
So just looking at a little bit of math, real quick, if the total funding that's on your sheet is $157.35 million, if you take out the donated $2.65 million, that takes you to $154.7 million. And if you compare that to the Phase One budget of $155.295 million, we have, with no donated funds, we're, we have a shortfall of about $600,000.
Which is eliminated if you wait a year to take out the COPS law.
Exactly.
Steve, this is a very generic question, but with people listening, I think that sometimes people conflate budget and expenses. So why don't you talk to us for a minute about the, that these are, obviously, you don't know every expense that's going in, it's based on some projections, could you talk to us about, I know this could go on forever, so see if we can put it in as few words as possible so that people understand what we're talking about.
Do my best.
I mean, any, I pick you, but anyway.
Right, the numbers that, when we look at the Phase One budget, we have to keep in mind that that's not the cost of the project, that's simply the budget that we are establishing with which we will then go out and design, bid, and construct these facilities. That's, we're, we're looking at just approving the budget, like you do for your, you know, our operating budget every year, and then the administration is charged to live within that budget. This is the same thing here, we're establishing a budget, and we're relying on Regency and Steve Zaranen at Fanning Howie, and their expertise to say, this is an adequate budget to do the work that we are contemplating, and there has been, there are contingency dollars built into that, and both design and construction contingencies, so that if we run into unforeseen conditions, we'll be able to manage those.
And I'm sort of addressing it to you, but anyone can pick this up.
Sure.
If I remember right, the law changed, it's somewhere along the way, in terms of how you could go about hiring contractors, is that correct?
That's correct, and
Could you explain that?
Sure, the state legislature made a change, essentially granting public school districts the same options that the private sectors had for years in terms of procuring contracted and construction services. The long and the short of it, it gives us a lot more options, and it gives us a lot more options to save money in terms of procuring those services. Now, if you wanted to go in more detail, Steve Zanoni is an expert in, in that legislation and could talk, you know, at length about it, I don't know if there's anything else you wanna add, Steve?
I think the one thing that I would like to add with the new delivery models is the use of the guaranteed maximum price, as opposed to, what that allows for you to do prior to bidding is getting the construction manager, or if we did design-build, to guarantee the price prior to bidding, which takes the risk away from you as, as a district. And that's probably the key element, is reducing risk on districts. Prior to this is, whatever the bid market happened, that's what it was, now they've taken the risk, and that, that's a great benefit.
Yeah, and the beauty of that is, we get to push them to get the number that they, we've agreed to.
Right.
Right, so sharpen the pencil, instead of just taking whatever we get in a bid scenario and having to live with that.
Right, and, and I mean, not bring up old, bad meetings, but, but part of the free-market economy, that was part of the discussion we once had before, and I think maybe some of the answers before were based on the fact that maybe this legislation wasn't available to us, but the part of the free-market economy is that, that we're, this is a big job for somebody, so it's a nice carrot for someone, and, you know, we need to keep them within the limits, and that brings me to questions for you, which is about debt ceilings, because I think that what, what we need to, we're gonna be pounding up against a debt ceiling here, and so, do you wanna talk to us about that at all in any way, shape, or form, because, because the fact that we can, we can force a maximum means that then the debt ceiling doesn't become an issue of, all of a sudden, we ran out of money. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
That's an accurate statement, of course.
Forward, Kathy?
Yeah. That's an accurate statement, it's for everything works the way it's supposed to work.
And
No, but that's correct, that you have, you have less of a possibility of cost overruns than what you had under the old system, and therefore, less need to have to issue bonds to complete a project where you may or may not have the debt capacity to do so.
Would you be willing to go over, this was, occurred at many of the, at the Lay Facilities meetings, in terms of talking about the debt ceiling and where we were in relationship to that, relationship to that, but there continues to be a question among some members of the community, certainly about, are we exceeding, are we coming close to our debt ceiling, what happens if we come within whatever amount of it, what does this set us up for the future? I mean, can you just go over the basic groundwork of that again, in terms of what we are proposing here, and what our options are?
Yes.
And what changes with special needs.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can go over that. I do think it's worth pointing out that this district has not incurred very much debt historically, and
That again, it would be delightful.
Well, no, I mean, just to say, it's not, it's not as though you're, you're needing to issue bonds in large principal amounts on some kind of regular basis, the last time the district did that was when they built Boulevard and Fairfax and that series of buildings, and so, I don't think there's as much to fear about exceeding your debt capacity as there might be if you were talking about your, you know, your personal budget. There's a 9% basic statutory debt limit, it's 9%, the principal amount of your debt is not to exceed 9% of your assessed valuation, so currently, within that limit, you've got a little bit more than $90 million of capacity, which isn't enough for your project. There's this exception, the special needs designation, designed for districts that can show that they reasonably expect that their assessed valuation is gonna grow at least by a certain amount over the next 10 years. You do a look back of 10 years in order to determine if you qualify. If we look back 10 years, the, the average amount that you need to be able to be a special needs district is 1.5% average annual growth, and you have, I don't know, 1.56, 1.57% average annual growth, so you're right, you know, right there, but you still do qualify for special needs. And with a special needs designation, you have a $144 million debt capacity. Now, let's say that you go on the ballot this fall for $138 million, approximately, you'll be using a special needs designation to do that, you, and that will be it. It's unlikely that in the next few years, you would continue to qualify for special needs, because, as we've described before, that 10 years includes some years of substantial AV growth, mostly in the far-away part of the 10 years, the more recent years involve drops in your assessed valuation, and so it would take some extraordinary increases in assessed valuation over the next few years for you to qualify again. So you get that designation for this bond issue that's going on the ballot this fall, you don't have to issue it all right away, but you do kind of lose, you know, that, that opportunity, and it's unlikely to be available to you again. When I say that opportunity, I mean the difference between 138 million and 144 million. Now, I know there've been some questions about the library, because you have issued bonds, general obligation bonds for library improvements. Once you've hit, once you issue bonds that take you up to either the 9% or your special needs designation, you, you will have exhausted your debt capacity. Some years down the road, when you qualify for CFAP funding from the state, you will then be able to issue bonds for your project, that, where those bonds exceed the debt limit, but as far as things like the library bonds go, there won't be room within your debt capacity for that until the assessed valuation grows and you pay down principal on your, on your debt. However, libraries do have the ability to borrow against their state, their state revenue sources, so it's not as though there's no other option for the library.
And the recommended amount that, that the Lay Facilities Committee has recommended won't take us up to that limit?
No, it will take you up to that limit, because you'll get a designation for this amount, for this bond issue, and, and then you won't have that extra amount come next year. Next year, you won't qualify anymore for a special needs designation, so you wouldn't be able to go in for that extra amount for some other reason. You've done the math analysis on this.
Which is only about $6 million.
Well, I guess that's the question, really.
Wouldn't have been enough to do a library.
Do a 6 million, but anyway.
I mean, compared to the size of a project.
Yeah, there, there seems to be some room there. If we go for 138, the difference in 138
Only through the end of this year.
That expires.
It expires, okay, so that's what
Yes, it expires.
Okay. Because our rolling 10-year average is gonna take a drop at, at the end of this year.
Okay.
Because a good year falls off and a bad year comes on.
But once we establish the, the amount, we can, it's there for us to tap into when we need to, is that correct? I mean, we don't have to issue all the bonds at the, at the point that we establish it.
That's correct. There is a potential for losing your ability to issue those bonds in the, you know, under the special needs designation if your AV drops dramatically by 15%, but we wouldn't expect that to happen at this point.
Is that, when we look at that, is that the assessment that the assessor does every three years, or the state requires every three years? Is that what we're talking about? How do we know what the assessed valuation is?
It's every year, actually, they calculate what your assessed valuation is every year, and then what you're talking about are the adjustments, there's a triennial adjustment and a sexennial adjustment, with the sexennial being usually the big adjustment. But they, there are adjustments every year.
Okay.
County does that.
I think, do we have that here?
What is the base?
Total assessment?
I wanna go back to Nancy's question, just for a minute, because I think other people might, I wanna make sure that I understand correctly, it is, so once we, if we lock in at the 134.8 and we, and it's approved, even though our special needs would have said 144, that doesn't mean we have would have said 144, that doesn't mean we have up to the 144. We don't get that playroom once the next year comes and once we drop off to the, back to the 9% level. Is that correct? Or am I not asking a question very well?
You don't drop back down to the 9% limit, because you will have been given the special needs designation for this bond issue.
Right, but the bond, but it's frozen at the amount you actually asked for, not at what you could have asked for.
That's right. That's right. If you qualified again next year for a special needs designation and for an amount larger than the 138 million, then you would be able to go in and request an additional designation for a bond issue that you are going to put on the ballot next year. We just don't think you're going to qualify unless you have some kind of extraordinary and unexpected increase.
And then explain for a minute the 4.25% interest. When does, how does that get locked in? When does that get locked in? If you don't issue all your, if you don't issue all the bonds right away, is it still locked in at that rate? And how do we know at the time we go for the vote, it's going to be 4.25?
I want Al to talk about specifically about the interest rate, but I think what I just want to point out, when you're trying to determine what the millage is going to be that's on the ballot, you are estimating. You're doing the best job that you can, but you're estimating that interest rate. You're also, well, we will be locking in this maximum maturity of the bonds, but we're doing that also based on estimates of hard cost allocations among, you know, 40-year-life, 20-year-life, 10-year-life. That's how we've come up with this 38 years instead of the 36, but that, these are always estimates. And the, when you talk about the COPS issue, and as we're talking about issuing COPS a couple of years from now, that's an estimate, and it's based largely on whatever the interest rate is going to be at the time that those are issued. And the reason that now we're talking about an 18-plus million COPS issue instead of a smaller one is because rates are relatively low right now. If rates go up in the next couple of years, that will reduce the amount that you can borrow in the form of COPS.
And in order for that, does that PI money have to be locked in for the entire term of the loan?
Yes. Yes. That commitment for that PI money should be there. And I think it's anticipated that the term of the loan would be for 30 years for the COPS issue. And I'll address the, Kathy mentioned the interest rate on the COPS. The assumption of the $18 million is based on an interest rate of 5%. The interest rate for the bonds, we estimated at 4.25%. That's not current market differential between the two, but when we're talking about an interest rate for the COPS with the possibility that we might be out much further in borrowing, this is no different than what we were talking about in terms of a budget. You know, we're establishing a budget. The actual is going to be established on the budget. When you have design and when you spend the money for the interest rate, it's going to be when you sell the bonds. So when we talk about the 4.25, we wanted to build in a contingency, just like the budget. So 4.25 is a little bit more than what current market is. But I think statute intended to be able to tell the taxpayers, when the board took action, what's the current market? What is the best information that you have at that date in time in terms of what the estimated cost would be? I don't know if it's fair to overly inflate the interest rate, which should we put 7% and show the millage to be well and above what it would be? No, I think that the right thing to do is to judge what the market is. You can be a little bit conservative, and we're being a little bit conservative here, not very conservative. So to further answer the question, the likely time that you would sell the bonds would be in the first quarter of 2014. So you have a seven, eight-month difference in time, and markets can certainly move. They can serve, they can move up and they can move down. So the actual cost is going to be set sometime in that first quarter of 2014 when you sell the bonds.
And I think the reason that the interest rate you've been recommending has dropped a little bit is we're getting closer, so you're much more confident in your guess.
Great, sure, when we were talking with the committee, I think at one point we were using 5%.
Right.
When we were, when it was seven months ago, back in December. So as we're getting a little closer, I'm feeling a little bit more comfortable. We're still a long way away from entering the market, but it's, I think it's our best guess at this point in time.
Al, can you describe the correlation between the estimate of the interest rate for this purpose and then, and then having to sort of readjust the debt service in order to be able to stay within that millage in the, in the next few years?
Al, since you're at the mic, would you restate what she just said to you so that people can hear it?
Sure. I think what you want to talk about is the state statute. She's asking that, what's the difference between the calculation that's made to establish the millage for the ballot versus what we're actually going to do in the first quarter of 2014? And they're two different things. Statute's very rigid in how you're supposed to make this calculation for the ballot. It's based on very old law, and it assumes that the district would issue debt in equal principal installments. The calculation is frankly, it's a very simple one that the county makes. They take the par amount of the issue and the term of the issue, and you pick an interest rate, and then they take the principal and they divide it by 38 years. And then they add interest in the first year. And that's your first year, and then they take principal in the last year and the interest, and they add them together and divide by two. It's a very simple calculation, but what it comes up with is what the average is. But it's the average assuming that you would issue the debt in equal principal installments. So think about that.
Yeah.
And that's a little bit different than your home mortgage. Your home mortgage is, we all know, the interest is this big in the first year and the principal's that big, but the total mortgage payment's the same every month for the term of the loan. If you had equal principal, then the principal would be this big and the interest would be smaller, but the millage by rule would be about 140% of what you put on the ballot in the first year. And this is the way all bond issues were done until about 1988, '89 in the state of Ohio. So if you put six mills on the ballot, you would be mandated under law to sell your bonds with equal principal payments, and the millage in that first year would be eight mills. And you'd have sticker shock and outrage, and this is the way the law was. Well, the law changed in the late days, in the early 90s to say, well, look, when you actually sell the bonds, we won't make you do that anymore. You can sell them like your home mortgage. You can sell them with equal debt service payments. You can stretch that debt service payment out over time. Now clearly, that is going to add more interest, just like your home loan, 15-year loan, or if you pay off principal or make extra pay, principal payments, it's going to reduce your interest. But what it does is it spreads the cost out evenly over a longer period of time, and it reduces that burden in the early years. And that is what this school district would do, as does every school district in Ohio. Now, nobody does it the old way. So, and the reason I think Kathy wanted me to talk about it, and the reason we talk about it is, it adds even that much more uncertainty in terms of how the market is, are in the future. But it's also a reason to work with some latitude with what the interest rate is on this issue, because it's the only variable. The term is set, 38 years. The par amount is set. The assessed valuation is set. The only thing we can control this millage with a little bit is what the interest rate is. And because of the burden of statute in forcing us into this calculation, and they changed it in how you were allowed to sell the debt, but they never changed the formula, we feel a little comfortable in using an interest rate that's close to market. In some school districts, we'll even get very aggressive in pushing that interest rate down. I wouldn't recommend that. I feel comfortable with 4.25%, but it's, that's, that's the difference in the statutory requirement for putting the issue on the ballot, but ultimately, how we would sell the debt, to keep that burden level throughout the life of the issue.
The, you know, the risk of being very aggressive on your interest rate estimate is that you won't, you'll end up having to levy more millage than the ballot millage, and you are required to do that. Again, that ballot millage is an estimate. You're required to levy whatever is necessary in order to pay the debt service on the bonds. So it's just, you know, it's, it's a negative for a lot of reasons to, you know, right away, go out with a millage that's higher than what the people just got through voting on. So you want to be careful about your interest rate estimate. I want to just explain a little bit about why all of a sudden we're talking about 38 years instead of 36 years. First of all, the 36 years goes back to an earlier project, what we were looking at in 2012. And this segment one is somewhat different from that project. We ask for an allocation of the hard costs among different lives of improvements, and then we do a weighted, weighted average of the useful life of those improvements. So segment one, on its own, has a 37-year average useful life, and that means a 37-year maximum maturity for the bonds. However, because you're going to be financing part of it with COPS, this, you know, $18.75 million of COPS, you have the option of allocating some of the shorter-lived improvements to the COPS. And that then brings up the weighted average useful life of the improvements that are going to be paid for with the bond issue. You still have a pretty long weighted average useful life for the COPS facilities as well, but that's how we got up to the, got up to the 38 years.
Kathy, that means that if we look at the dollars and the COPS and the voted bond issue, we have a pretty good idea of what in each one of those dollars. So those are not just, we've got 157 million that we want to get to. We actually know that 18.75 million of the improvements is this. We, this is matched.
Right, that's right. By going to this, by allocating this way between the COPS and the bonds, it means you're going to have to keep track of each pot of money and what you spent it on to make sure that you did in fact spend the bond proceeds on the longer-lived improvements and the COPS proceeds on some of the shorter-lived improvements. We're also planning on having the COPS relate to the middle school improvements rather than the high school improvements. So there will be, anyway, there will be these different pots of money that you've got to keep an eye on and what you do.
Yeah, I was going to say, who oversees that?
Yeah, is this self-policing?
Yes.
Do we have to report it to anybody?
Well, it's subject to audit.
Yeah, subject to audit, right. That's right. Yeah.
If the state auditor could review what you've done.
I mean, everything is self-policing, but subject to. We would do that anyway, Ron.
I just wondered, I mean, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's just floating out there, you know? And I, you know, I want to make sure that we understand what we're settling the future board members with and administration. So we've got to keep good.
Another suggestion that Steve made that I think makes sense is whoever gets the contract for the high school part of the project, they don't necessarily get the work for the middle schools. They are under close scrutiny, and if they exceed expectations and do it right, they have to give them a leg up on getting that additional piece of work. And likewise with the elementary schools. So there'll be a lot of incentives for the, whoever's doing the work to do it efficiently and well.
I want to take one step back, and it has to do with the CTE program that we're going to move from the Delisle Center to the high school. The fact that we can peg it at 1.5 million dollars mean that we know what the square footage costs are to have the programs of study that we presently have? I mean, how did we arrive at this number? Is this, have we figured out square footage issues related to the program of studies?
Yeah, the career tech, the state of Ohio has certain guidelines and square footages for each career tech program identified. And we looked at each program and the requirements that the state would have for each program. And then there's also a dollar per square foot allocation for each program, and that's how those numbers were derived for both the programs at Delisle, to build that new space.
But it means that all the offerings, all the program of studies are, we know what they are too. In fact, it's not just the Delisle vote.
Correct, yeah. Every, every program, right, has, has a breakdown of square footage requirements for every program. Some will, are called the high bay, which will have a larger, like the automotive type would have a larger space, plus classrooms, plus changings and lockers, and where the cosmetology would have different requirements. So they have different space requirements and different costs allocated to those programs. So each program does have a different cost allocation and requirement to it.
Is there any projection related to the number of students that would be in these programs, or that's not necessary to arrive at these numbers?
The, the way that the, the programs are, the state looks at funding programs based on population, and a lot of the sizing of the programs are based on population. So you'd need a.
So the overall enrollment trends.
Correct. Would dictate how much space are for each.
This tracks that.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Which is the alternative program? It goes to the high school also?
The options?
Options? Does that go to the high school, or does it stay in its?
Currently stays at Delisle.
Okay.
How was that? That's what you meant. I think part of it was that there is some argument to be made that having that program off-site is to a benefit, that those are kids are looking for, need instructional help, you know, to some degree apart from high school. It's why, in some cases, why they're there.
Could I make a, I want to make a follow-up point about the, one of the initial questions, which was about your debt capacity. When we talk about debt capacity, we're talking about general obligation bonds. And of course, you wouldn't be able to incur any additional debt anyway unless the voters approved a bond issue. If for some reason, if some circumstances arose where you unexpectedly needed to issue more debt for capital improvements, you could put a new permanent improvement levy on the ballot, and if the voters approved that, you could then issue tax anticipation notes that would be payable from that levy. You could also issue COPS that would be payable from that levy. Those would not count toward your debt limit. So it's not as though you don't have any ability to borrow money for capital improvements when you've reached your full debt capacity.
What do you call that? You gave us another kind of participation loan now, what was that?
It's a tax anticipation note.
Okay, so the tax is actually the servicing of that loan?
Correct, correct.
And you, and there is a limit to how much you could raise it based on what you're willing to go to the ballot with?
Right. You, you can only borrow 50% of the amount that you expect to collect over, over a 10-year period of time. But there is still that ability to borrow against your permanent improvement levy. So my point being that you, there are other methods of borrowing besides issuing general obligation bonds.
Well, I guess the reason I'm, I think we want to understand that, because as we get into and try to answer other questions that may come up, like we've got this issue around how is this going to impact the library and what its needs might be and stuff like that? So, you know, it'd be good for us to really understand that, if you can.
What I'm talking about would not apply to the library.
Oh, okay, okay. It would just be for us?
Yes, it would be for school purposes.
But the library has other options.
Yes, they do. And Al can talk more about that.
He's Mr. Library of Orange in the state of Ohio.
I think Kathy already addressed it. There's two primary ways that the library, actually, there's three primary ways they can borrow. One is a voted issue through the school district as a school district library. But they can also issue COPS just like the school district can issue COPS, these certificates of participation. They're not raising any new money. They would have to pretty much have an existing revenue stream to support that. And the same thing with borrowing against the public library fund. It's a mechanism that the state gives them to borrow. Again, it's, it's not an additional revenue stream. So the likely way, if they didn't have existing funds to pay off debt and they needed to go to the voters, the typical way the library would do it would be, they would put an operating levy on, they would just put a new levy on that raised the funds. The mechanism to borrow against that then would be either through COPS or through the public library fund. And their capacity would be large enough that it would be able to address, I think, did you calculate the, can't remember if we talked about calculating what the capacity is on the PLF?
We did calculate it, but I can't remember what it is.
I can't either. But it was, it was a large number. But it was, it was a large number, to be able to satisfy, I think, anything that they might want to do.
Another concern that's come up with reaching, maxing out our debt limit, is, you know, what happens if there's an urgent need over the next? what happens if there's an urgent need over the next several years that we need to make a capital expenditure on? Many, many things that would fall into that category of an urgent need would be covered by the district's insurance. I mean, that, if there was a sudden, you know, a natural disaster of some kind, we're, we're covered. So that's, keep that in mind.
Yeah, and I, I think just piggybacking on, on what Patrick's saying, and actually Kathy already said this once, but I think it bears repeating, you know, when we use the term we're maxing our debt limit, we all immediately think about our own personal finances. And in that case, that's not a very good thing. But for a school district, for us, maxing out our debt capacity, you know, we don't, we don't have a lot of need to leverage debt or to utilize it, okay? Going back in the past history, there's, you know, I, I don't know that anybody can think of a time where we had an emergency need to really leverage debt. We, we just haven't. School districts just don't have that kind of need. And so the idea of us reaching our maximum is not as significant an issue, as, as an issue as it would be in your own personal finances. And again, as both Al and Kathy have said, despite the fact that we would maximize our debt, there are still options for us, as well as the library, to do additional borrowing beyond the maximum that we've been talking about, so.
You've talked to us a little bit about the PI budget, so talking about taking 1.25 million dollars out of an annual, what is it currently, 3.7?
About three, yeah, right.
Okay, so, so taking that away, now there's the capital, I mean, I think everyone can sort of grasp the idea that if your money's coming in to do the high school first and the, and the middle school, so probably there wouldn't be a lot of needs. But the capital, the PI budget handles more than just capital improvements, there's other things that budget. So talk to us about your comfort level with utilizing 1.25 million dollars out of that or tying that up for a period of time.
Well, that's been something I've given a lot of thought to over time. And because it's going to tie up those funds for a long time, we're talking about 30 years, so we'll lose the use of them for a long time. And we obviously had a, have a lot of facility needs. I mean, we've talked about that over and over again, the backlog of needs that we have. You know, early on, we also mentioned the fact that there is some debt service that we use the PI levy to, funds to pay for. That, it's been on the books for the past 15 years, that's very soon going to drop off, I think in 2014, it's some 600, $650,000 roughly. So we haven't had the use of those funds for the past 15 years. And all of a sudden, we're going to gather, we're going to have those back. So I haven't had those to use. And so now applying them to this, a million or a million and a half, makes it that much of a less, makes it that much of, less of a hit to me in terms of what I have to use to address the needs that we have, because I haven't had that money to begin with. But to directly answer your question, I'm comfortable with the 1.25 million. I, I, that's really the maximum that I would want to go. I would not want to use any more than that because of the needs that we have. And certainly, as has already been said, once we take the high school offline, I mean, the high school is, is 40% of the square footage of our district. So you take that offline and I no longer have to address the needs of that building, that, that allows me to distribute the remaining funds to the other buildings, have that much more to work with, right? Have that much less need or that to, to address. In addition, you know, we're, we're, we've been working under sort of a working assumption that the 1.25 million dollars would begin to be taken out of the PI fund immediately, you know, immediately upon the ace, we get the bond issue passed and immediately that 1.25 million comes out. Well, as we've said, it's possible for us to defer the issuance of the COPS loan. And so theoretically, there's some, there's 1.25 million dollars that I wasn't counting on that all of a sudden we now have. Then we can use that to offset additional expenditures for the bond or for this capital campaign, or I can use that to address some of the needs that we have still remaining at the elementary schools, so.
But I don't, I don't want to paint with too broad a stroke. So Scott, I'm going to ask you, but maybe somebody else. Is there any, is there any industry standard data used? Great, you start building a new building, but some point after it's built, you, things start happening again. Is there any sort of data based on that? I mean, you can't just say, I built a new high school, so for the next 30 years, we won't have any expenses there at all. So I mean, so what, is there any sort of industry standard on that? And maybe you're the wrong person, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just comment that you do have some warranty periods for, for some of your major components of the building, your roofs, your HVAC systems, et cetera. So there is some protection there for, for a period of time. Typically, your workmanship, you have a year warranty on. So there is some protection for a period of time and that'll vary depending on the warranties for each component. So, Steve, if you know of an exact.
Well, there's industry standards, but the, every building is so unique, you know, it's a, it's a specialty in and of itself. But the one thing I will say is one of the options available in a state-funded project is the preparation of a, a maintenance plan agreement where a separate consultant comes in, evaluates the technical information of all systems, all materials in the building, and then prepares a, a plan for the district to follow. And it has very, various categories based on, you know, the best maintenance, which obviously is, is the most, the highest cost to a middle level to a lower, lower level. So the district can, can budget accordingly, depending on the need, over, over a period of time.
So if you were to trigger that vehicle, when would it come into play? As you're building the building or after you got it up?
Well, the, the preparation of it would be during, during construction.
So, until you look at the specifications and?
Absolutely, absolutely. And look at not only the, the specifications of the design, but also, you know, what was the actual product installed? What was the actual equipment installed? And dealing with, with their expertise, expertise in that field, manufacturers' recommendations, and then putting a plan in place, quite frankly, from, from the day you open the building. Here's what you need to do in year one. Here's what you need to do and, and there's, there's routine maintenance, you know, on a monthly level, quarterly level. And then there's something that, items that are more long-term, such as two, three years out. But at least it gives you a, something to reference as far as a, a planning tool moving forward. And then you utilize those strategies based on the funds available. And every district goes about that protocol a bit differently.
Now, do we expect any of the sustainability features that have been proposed to in any way help in terms of the usage of the PI budget? I realize, I see it in the operating budget, but I just, do we see it in the PI budget?
No. Yeah.
The operating, but I'm not sure. We relate to PI. Depend on the system and what's.
I mean, we haven't chosen, yeah.
I think the, the maintenance costs will vary depending upon what kinds of, depending upon what kinds of sustainability systems you put in. So for instance, if you were to put solar panels up, now they have a different kind of maintenance requirement than, say, a geothermal system would have, right? But I don't know that it, there's a huge positive one way or the other, per se. Sustainability is about saving operational dollars and, and avoiding, you know, contaminating the environment and contributing to.
Energy efficiencies and therefore energy savings from an operational standpoint.
Right.
Of course, I would point out the greater cost of, of not proceeding with a facilities plan is that the buildings continue to age, we continue to do a disservice to our kids and our teachers because they're, they're not working in optimal spaces right now. So it, without minimizing at all, it's a huge investment that we're, as a community, trying to take on here. But it's one that every few decades, we got lucky, it's fallen on us to make that investment.
Other thoughts, questions?
More questions, we have a lot of conversation going forward over the next month.
Yeah.
No more questions for me at this time.
Right. It seems to me that we've got some real work to do here, that maybe just the questions that we need answered maybe are in pretty good shape. But it seems to me that we're going to have to have another opportunity just to focus in on this plan and where we want to go in terms of getting our, our bond issue, the issues related to a bond issue nailed down. And I'm not, and I don't have a good timeline in my head in terms of whether or not we might need to carve out some additional time for just us to talk this through a little bit more, whether we need to, as children would say, marinate on this for some period of time. But I'm open to hear any reflection on that. Anybody thought about it at all based on?
Well, I mean, my, my general sense, Ron, is that, that we, we obviously need.
Sorry.
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
We obviously need time, but we, we also need to build in some additional opportunities to get community and citizen feedback, even though that was a, it was a very open and long process that the lay facilities committee went through. Now, some people are, are coming to this now as this comes to us. There are new people coming forward to express concerns, wishes, desires, and we need to be open to hearing that. And, and also, I'm really excited about what I'm hearing from the, the community about their excitement behind us now, that we didn't have last year. So that's a, that's a really good thing. And we need to think about how we're going to marry those, the, the entire timeline because we're on a very short timeline for getting a bond issue passed also. So it, it's incredibly complicated and it needs to be our questions answered, community questions, concerns and, and opportunities. And then who, the folks who are going to be taking the lead on helping us, I assume, I assume, get this thing passed. That was an answer.
Well, it, it's an interesting answer. You know, I wrestle with the idea of what we are asking for by way of input from the public at this point. And that might be a personal wrestling that, that I'm doing. I know that if I walk out in the streets, I hear feedback about where people think we are and some sort of initial feel about where, where they think we are. What I think I hear you saying is that we might want to have one more opportunity for people to say to us how they feel, what they think, any suggestions or whatever. I don't know, see, I'm having a hard time thinking about what that looks like, whether it's input or comment or, you know, we've got a committee that has met for some period of time and they've given us a report. We raised some issues about, you know, particularly the cost is what we were really trying to focus in on. So I, I need some help. What do other board members think or feel?
I believe that the forum or session that we had that really led to helping us get to our decisions in, in a sense that we had at the high school where it was more so an open dialogue and gave the citizens an opportunity to say what was on their mind, for us to get a gauge on the likelihood of it passing, it being accepted. I think that was good for us. And it gave the community also opportunity to feel as though they were having some type of voice, maybe not necessarily input in the planning and the, and the, the, all the logistics of it, but at least being heard and not being left out. I think the committee has done an excellent job in hearing from the outside and kind of putting that together. But I think giving the community one last opportunity before we have to make a decision to at least say, without promising anything, but at least hearing and seeing where we stand with the community after the community's, lay facilities committee has put this together, that it wasn't us, but it was the peers from the community doing.
I would be happy to attend such a meeting.
You would? When would you like to attend such a meeting?
No, it's nine now, I would say. I am, I am, as of now, I am in town through the month of June.
Okay. Just one thing.
Go ahead.
To me, it seems like there's a, a set of discrete issues that are all interrelated. So, and, and for me, it goes back to this whole notion of budget versus design. I think the input that I've heard over time, and clearly there were, there was other input earlier on regarding just plain structural input, but is more related to people are saying, I'm not understanding the design, I'm not, you know, are you going to have this, are you going to have that? And really, what we're talking about, and anyone should correct me if I'm wrong, is, is the budget that we're setting here a reasonable budget to get done everything we need to get done?
Yes.
Anybody can yell at me.
That's correct. We believe it is.
I paid them all.
In fact, Cal, I would point out that, in contrast to last year, we are not drawing, not expecting, you know, $19 million in donations or foundation money, for example. We've taken a more conservative financial approach, which is why we're doing it in phases.
Right.
And so, yeah, that's what we've been wrestling with all the way through is we don't want to give you a number that's not a real number in terms of what we think is going to cost. And we want to make sure, and what we've heard loud and clear from the community is if you're going to do this, do it right. Don't, don't do partial renovations of buildings. I mean, let's set, let's do something that really sets us up for the next several decades.
Well.
No, go ahead, you go ahead.
Well, and, and one of my concerns with that is that we heard before was there was no, anything to physically see.
Right.
How this was going to take place, you know, no demo or, what architectural terms, what is it? Yeah, yeah, blueprints or even, even past the blueprints, a scale, you know, of what it was going to look like. So when you're talking about the high school, what is, what are, what are we talking about for the high school? What are we, what are we thinking of getting rid of? What are we thinking of keeping? And we said it in a sense, but for people to actually see it, and I think that would help. So I don't know if before having the meeting, if, that that would, that would be at the meeting to explain what it would look like and then to get the feedback as opposed to doing it before.
Well, for example, the high school, if you're, if you're driving up Cedar Road, the science wing will be gone. The courtyard will be restored, the clock tower and the 1920s wing will be restored. So you'll see a building much closer to what it looked like when it was new. And we, and there are drawings of that because that is along the same lines as other renovation plans that have been put forward over the last several years.
But that's what I'm saying, past the, even past the drawings.
But we won't have a design because we don't have a design architect yet.
Right, and that, I mean, I, I understand what you're, what you're seeing here. And that's an issue that we talked about before, the, last year, and that we, we, we said that it doesn't, several of you helped me understand that it's, it's completely the normal way of operating in this context, that none of that work is done until after you secure the funding for the, for the project. And so it would make no sense to spend millions of dollars to have real architectural plans developed now before we know whether a bond issue passes. And that's going to be a tough hurdle for some people because some people want to see what they're buying.
Well, the money to pay those architects is coming from the pot. The money to pay the architects, the design architects.
And I'm, and I'm sure there's some kind of a happy medium.
Nancy, can I, can I just add to that, to that? One of the things is it's important, and you, you summarized it very well, but I think there's sort of a forgetfulness about that when the design process starts, once architects are selected, once the money, the budgeted money is available, there is going to be a process where the public, the community is going to participate in that design process. And the staff, I mean, if you were to talk to the staff who are working, going to be working in these buildings, they would like to know what it would look like too. They're going to participate. So it's not as if the, the community participation ends once this bond issue, it actually begins. And that's where different constituents within the community are going to, going to come to meetings and they're going to look, look at the beginnings of renderings, bring up what's important to them, what, how it. to them, what, how it looks, what sustainable features are important. It doesn't mean that that isn't going to happen. It's very hard, though, in sort of the bond, in the process, to convince a community that, you know, we don't know exactly what this looks like. But in a lot of ways, that's important to understand that they know that they're going to participate in what that, those buildings are going to look like in the end.
So with every yes vote, they'll get an invitation.
That's right. That's right. Thank you, Karen.
Well, and also because of the priority we put on historic preservation of our existing buildings, we're not looking at a whole new set of buildings. We're looking at Phase One, the high school and two middle schools, which are all older buildings, which are going to be substantially reconfigured in terms of their systems and their efficiency. But when you drive by them, they will look like a fresher, better version of what you drive by now. We're not looking to build footprint buildings.
Right.
I think that's a great comment, and really worth emphasizing, you know. So thank you, Patrick.
Okay. So it feels as if we need to try to see if there's a time when we can have another meeting for public comment, really. And then it seems to me that we should have enough time after public comment for us to finalize our work so that we can have our first reading on July 2. So I think it means that we have to meet June 11th for the public input.
At 7:30.
At 7:30.
Get them socially.
So I think June 11th would be three weeks from tonight. And that would give people a chance.
No, that can't be it.
Isn't it?
Maybe.
Am I, am I? Oh, I got the wrong calendar, maybe, huh?
No, you're probably right. You're probably right.
It's the 21st, 28th, 4th, and 11th. 28th is one week.
4th is two.
Sorry.
11th is three. And, and, and we have a regular board meeting on the 4th. So I figure the 11th probably would be three weeks, and it'd give us time to frame. If we're going to do that, really, I would want to, Nancy, for us to really talk about how to put this together. And you've got good insights on this, so maybe you and I should work together in terms of how we manage this meeting, along with the administration, maybe.
I think that would be important for us to know, in terms of what we would have to be prepared for.
Well, I think what Nancy and I would have to put some time into it, and we'd ask the other board members to feed in your thoughts and ideas. And then we would probably sit down and, and organize the meeting. And we could do, we may, we'll have time to do that. We don't have to wait to do that. We can get to work on it right now. What do you think? Eric?
I think that's, no, I think that's all viable and good. I picture this meeting being very sparsely attended. I picture it being the same. I think it's the same because the, because the lay facilities committee has had so many public meetings.
Yeah.
I think the people who are, you're absolutely right, there are people who have just come out in the last couple of weeks, who've been very quiet, who are now stepping forward saying, what about this, and this, and this? They deserve to have their voices heard. I think the majority of people who are, who are going to be asking those kind of questions have been asked them over the last year to the lay facilities committee. We can go, we can go back over, I'm trying to figure, what do we do at that meeting that's different than anything we've done before?
Well, that's what I'm trying to do.
It would be a, you know, a recreation of what this was, one more time for the public. And I'm not sure who else needs to, again, there'll be, I think legitimately, we'll reach maybe a dozen people who have not been reached before. That's my concern. I could be totally wrong about this. It could be like fill up the social room at the high school, and with people with all sorts of new questions and who need to hear it. But, and I'm not at all saying we should not do this. I'm just saying that's what I, at this point, because the process has gone on the way it has, as publicly as it has for as long as it has, I don't know that we're going to have new information to give people, and that people are going to have, who don't already know about this, are going to come to this, that haven't come to any of the things before. I'm not sure what are, what are we, what are we advertising this as being?
And I think that's an important point in terms of the, the structure of the meeting. I mean, is it going to be your intention that you're going to expect us to put on a very elaborate presentation that's going to try to capture all of the kinds of decision making, and, and, and facts and information that's gone on in the past? I mean, that would be very, very challenging to put together.
I think we need to, we need to do that throughout the campaign phase, obviously. But I, maybe an option then would be for us to agree to extend, if necessary, the public comment period at our regular June meeting, and, and let people know in advance that, that, that we want to hear from them, if people have not come forward throughout this.
Right, with questions or comments or anything.
This process over the last several years, if they have questions or comments to come forward.
I think that's a much better choice.
I like that.
So will we market, so to market it out there that this, that will be the opportunity?
Right. I mean, that they should, I think we should continue to stress, people should be contacting us now.
Yeah.
They should be emailing us, calling us, and they have been. And, and should continue to do that for as long as the questions arise and the concerns arise. But that there will be a, a public forum for this as well, for people who have not taken advantage of the previous public forums, or who are unaware of it, or for whatever reason, need, you have new information that's come to light.
Or waiting to see what the final.
We're waiting to see what, yes, exactly. If they, if they would like to publicly speak to the community, that evening, they will, they'll have a forum.
You're talking about June 4?
The June 4 meeting.
Which was, that's great. That's great.
And we're scheduled to be at the Lisle on June 4?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
It's on here, yes.
Okay, so we agree that we've, we will have encouraged comments regarding the lay facilities report, and any comments related to facilities that anyone in the community wants to tell us. So we'll do that. And then I think the other side of it is that after we get those comments, we'll have to do our pound thing, I think. And we can, we don't have to set that right now, but it might still be that June 11th is the date that we ought to have on our calendar for now. Okay? So are we good with that? We are good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay. What I'd like to do now is to have us move into executive session, and I'll take a motion to the fact that we move, the board moves into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22 G1, to consider the, for the purpose of considering the employment, employment dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official of the school district.
Second.
Yes. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Papp?
Yes.
Mr. Register? Here. Yes.